He exhorts them to walk in Christ. And it is an active obedience that God requires from each one of us to walk in Jesus Christ, walk in Him. And the reason is because we are saved by Christ Jesus. We have received Christ Jesus. And since we have received Christ Jesus, the Lord expects each of us to walk in Jesus Christ. And then in seventh verse of chapter two, Paul says, "Our status in Christ is that we are rooted in Christ. We are being built up in Christ and we are being established in faith." So there are three words that Paul tells the church of Colossae, rooted in Christ, built up in Christ, and established in faith. And this is their identity in Jesus Christ. This is their identity. What Paul tells the church of Colossae, that church of Colossae or has been rooted when they accept Christ Jesus as their Savior. Now in present continues, they're being built up in Christ and they are established in their faith. And then Paul says, "Just as you were instructed and overflowing with gratitude." That's where we stopped last week. So Epaphras, as we know, in first chapter, we see Epaphras taught the word of God to the church of Colossae. Epaphras has been teaching them. And even though Paul knows that Epaphras taught the word of God with conviction, as we know, the false teachers crept into this church of Colossae and they're trying to confuse the people in the church of Colossae. And then that context, in that setting, Paul is telling you, Paul is telling the church of Colossae that you have received Christ Jesus. Your identity is in Jesus. So the expectation from God as children of God is to be rooted in Christ, to continue being built up in Christ and be established in your faith. In other words, be established in the doctrines of faith. Epaphras has taught you the doctrines of faith. So it's not just to hear the doctrines of faith or listen to them, but actively walk in the faith, actively walk in what Epaphras has taught you. And that's what Paul is trying to tell the church of Colossae here. And that's why he says, "Just as you were instructed." Because you were instructed by Epaphras, because you were taught by Epaphras, the expectation of God from you is to be rooted in Christ, to be built up in Christ, and to be established in the faith. And then the active response, where Paul ends verse seven, is overflowing with gratitude. We need, we know, Philippians chapter four, six. We see different verses about thanksgiving and gratitude. Four, six says, "Everything by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, let your requests be made known to God." So thanksgiving is a consistent response a Christian needs to have in their Christian journey. Without thanksgiving, we cannot lead a complete Christian journey because thanksgiving is because of what Christ has done in our life. So thanksgiving is an expected fruit from every Christian in response to what God has done in our life. First Timothy two, one, Paul says, "I urge that entries and prayers, petitions, and thanksgivings be made on behalf of all men." Ephesians five, eight, "Speak to one another in sams and hymns and spiritual songs, and sing and making melody with your heart to the Lord, always giving thanks for all things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ." So thanksgiving is expected every time, not when you are joyful, not just when you're happy, but even in your sorrowful times, even when you go through disappointments, frustrations. God expects all of us to give thanks to the Lord for what He has done. Situations might change. Your, how you live right now, the conditions might change. But in every condition, we are obligated to give thanks to the Lord. And Paul says, "Do not get drunk with wine, but be filled with the Spirit." So when you're full of the Spirit, when you're filled with the Spirit, the expected response from each one of us is to give thanks to the Lord through our worship. That's why Paul says, "Singing and making melody with your heart to the Lord in hymns and spiritual songs." So why do we sing to the Lord? It's a part of giving thanks to the Lord. It is a way of expressing thanks to the Lord. And that's why we sing to the Lord. We make melody with your heart, with our heart to the Lord. And through songs, through hymns, through melody, we are basically expressing our thanks to the Lord. We're giving thanks to the Lord, our God. Second Corinthians four, fifteen, "So that the grace, which is spreading to more and more people, may cause giving of thanks to abound to the glory of God." So when grace abounds more, when God gives us grace, the expected response from us is to give thanks. And what does it result in? The glory of the Lord. That's what second Corinthians four, fifteen say. Giving of thanks to abound to the glory of God. And how does praise rise? How does thanks rise from our hearts? When grace is spread to more and more people, when grace abounds in us, when grace is given more to us, that expects, or that results in giving thanks to the Lord and it results in the glory of God. Again, Ephesians five, four, "No filthiness and silly talk or coarse jesting, which are not fitting, but rather giving of thanks." Instead of empty words, instead of silly talk, Paul says, "To give thanks to the Lord." So all these verses I read because to, or all these verses I read to show how Paul talks about thanksgiving or the expected response from every Christian which is giving thanks is what Paul is talking through all these epistles. So what we read in Colossians two, seven, was that overflowing with gratitude. How can we overflow with gratitude when we remember of His grace? When we remember what He has done for our life? When we remember of the salvation that He gifted us freely, without any works from our part, but only through grace? So when we are filled in the Spirit, be filled in the Spirit. Spirit fills us. We actively should be communicators with God. We should actively communicate with God. And when we communicate with God, God sends His Spirit into our hearts. And when we are filled in spirit, we make melody, we sing songs, we sing hymns, giving thanks to the Lord. And that is an expression. Singing is an expression where we give thanks to the Lord. So verse eight, Colossae two, it, "That no one takes you captive through philosophy and empty deception according to the tradition of men, according to the elementary principles of the world, rather than according to Christ." So after talking about giving thanks to the Lord, Paul tells the church of Colossae that, "No one takes you captive through philosophy and empty deception according to the tradition of men, according to the elementary principles of the world, rather than according to Christ." So as I mentioned in the previous class, these false teachers crept into the church of Colossae. They were teaching them all kinds of false teaching. Or in other words, they're trying to say that Christ alone is not enough, but rather for your salvation, you need to adhere to the principles of the Old Testament. You need to be circumcised. You need to follow the dietary laws. You need to follow the Old Testament ceremonies. Unless you follow the dietary laws and unless you are circumcised, unless you adhere yourself to the food laws, you cannot be saved. And in that setting, Paul is trying to tell, "Let no one take you captive through philosophy and empty deception." By philosophy, they, Paul is talking about the human philosophies that the false teachers were trying to teach them. They were trying to teach, in the beginning, in the first class I mentioned, there were like eleven or twelve false teachings that these false preachers or teachers were trying to teach the church of Colossae. So Paul is aware of that. Epaphras had let Paul know about the false teachings that were happening in the church of Colossae. And in that context, in that setting, Paul is telling the church of Colossae or exhorting the church of Colossae that, "Let no philosophy confuse you. Let no traditions of man confuse you. Let no one take you captive through philosophy or empty deception because you have an identity in Jesus Christ. You're saved by the blood of Jesus Christ and your only identity is that you are a child of God. Jesus Christ has saved you by giving His blood on the cross and your identity is in Christ." So having that identity in Christ, Paul is telling that, Paul is telling that no one should take you captive through philosophy or empty deception according to the tradition of men. What he's trying to say is that the tradition which the false teachers were trying, or were trying to induce into this church so that they were trying to say, "Only if you follow these philosophies, only if you follow the human philosophies and the traditions that we inject into your mind, you can be saved. Unless you follow that, you cannot be saved." And that's why Paul is saying, "You are rooted in Christ. You are being built up in Christ. You are, your foundation is in Jesus Christ." So Paul says in eighth verse, "According to the elementary principles of the world, rather than according to Christ. No one take you captive according to the elementary principles of the world, but rather according to Christ." If a philosophy that they teach you doesn't adhere the laws of Christ or doesn't adhere to the principles of Christ, reject it right away. Deny it right away. And that's what Paul is trying to say. So these false teachers were trying to teach them about a higher knowledge, a special revelation, emanations of spirit, all kinds of wicked things they were trying to teach the church of Colossae. They were telling, they need special knowledge from God. They need higher, higher knowledge than what they have received from the teachings of Epaphras. And in that confused state, Paul is trying to say, "Let not you be captive through these deceptions. Let not you be captive through these empty teachings." And these arguments were very immature and they didn't have any base on Scripture. They had no scriptural basis on, from what the false teachers were teaching them. So first Corinthians ten, twelve, "Therefore let him who thinks he stands take heed that he does not fall." Even this applies to us, even in this church age, in this dispensation of grace. Therefore let him who thinks he stands take heed that he does not fall. We might think that we are standing strong. We might be thinking that we have a foundation as, a foundation on Jesus Christ. But remember, still philosophies come to our minds. Still there are false teachers, false prophets, false preachers. They might be manipulating our minds. We don't even know sometimes that they are manipulating us. They're, or they're deceiving us. So remember, your identity or our identity is in Jesus Christ. And you need to have discernment to discern what is false and what is true. It might seem true to us. It might, the words that they use, the false teachers and preachers use might seem true to us. But remember, always compare it with the Scripture. Compare it with the word of God and try to see whether it aligns with the Scripture. If it doesn't align with the balance of Scripture, reject it right away. Hebrews three, twelve, "Take care, brethren; there not be any one of you an evil unbelieving heart that falls away from the living God." There is a chance that we can fall away if we don't continue to put our confidence or trust in the Lord. So that's why the writer of Hebrews says, "There not be any one of you an evil unbelieving heart." An unbelieving heart can happen anytime, even if you have put your trust in the Lord, even if you have put your confidence or faith in the Lord, even if you claim that you are saved, an unbelieving heart can come in a twinkle of an eye, in a twinkle of a second, right? Because our minds, we are still living in a sinful world. We are still living in a sinful age. So it can happen anytime. We can be influenced by sin. We can be influenced by the pleasures of the world. We can be influenced by all kinds of philosophies and all kinds of things that culture can offer. And in that, when we live in that age, remember our identity. Remember that we should stand strong for the Lord by continually, continuously putting our trust in the Lord. If we don't put allegiance to the Lord continuously or if we don't trust in the Lord continuously, if it doesn't happen in a way, every day of our life communicating with the Lord, praying in the Spirit, being full of the Spirit, then an unbelieving heart can occur to any one of us. So that's why the writer of Hebrews says, "There not be any one of you an evil unbelieving heart that falls away from the living God." We should take care ourselves. We should take care of ourselves. And how can we take care of ourselves? By being empowered with the Spirit, by being empowered with the Holy Spirit. First Timothy six, twenty, "O Timothy, God would have been interested to you avoiding worldly and empty chatter and the opposing arguments of what is falsely called knowledge." So don't engage yourself in false arguments. Don't engage yourself in worldly or empty chatter and opposing of arguments, what is falsely called knowledge. There might be all kinds of, all kinds of exposure that you can get to knowledge, so-called wisdom, so-called understanding. But rather than being engaged, or being engaging in all of those, be rooted in Christ, be built up in Christ, follow the laws of, follow what the Scripture tells us to do. Have your identity in Christ continuously, not just when you are saved, but remember you are saved by the blood of Jesus Christ and your identity is only in Christ alone. So eight verse, again, "No one should take you captive through philosophy or empty deception according to the tradition of men, but rather according to Jesus Christ." And then verse nine, he says, "For in Him the fullness of deity dwells in bodily form, and in Him you have been made complete, and He is the head of all rule and authority." So Jesus, Paul is trying to say, Jesus Christ is fully human and fully God. He's trying to defend the incarnation of Jesus Christ because the false teachers were trying to say that Jesus Christ did not incarnate. That was a main false teaching that happened in the church of Colossae. Christ was not incarnated because they believed matter is evil and only spirit is holy. So that was the understanding that the Greek philosophers had in the first century, matter is evil and spirit is holy. So a God cannot incarnate in the flesh. It's what they taught. But then remember, Epaphras had been teaching them that Christ incarnated in the flesh. Christ is fully God. Christ is fully man. He died for your sins and you are saved by the blood of Jesus Christ and your foundation is in Jesus Christ. Your identity is in Jesus Christ. So that's why he's repeatedly, if you look at first chapter and second chapter, we see repeated verses talking about the salvation that they have received. He's trying to defend who Christ is. He's trying to defend of how, on how you are being, you are being, you are saved and how you are being saved and what will happen in the future. So Paul had to try to defend his cause. Paul had to repeatedly say this again and again, that you are saved by Christ, you're saved by the blood of Christ alone. In Christ alone is your identity. And here he's trying to defend Christ himself. He's trying to say, "In Him," in Him means in Jesus Christ. "In Jesus Christ, all the fullness of deity or divinity dwells in bodily form, and in Him you have been made complete, and He is the head over all rule and authority." We know John, chapter one, verse fourteen, "And the Word became flesh and dwelt among us," and we saw His glory. The word which John is talking about is Jesus Christ. In the beginning was the word. The word was with God and the word was God. That's none other than Jesus Christ. So Christ became flesh and dwelt among each one of us. And we saw His glory, glory as of the only begotten from the Father, full of grace and truth. Then John says, "For of His fullness we have received and grace upon grace." So what do we receive from Jesus Christ? Grace and truth. "For the law was given through Moses, but we receive grace and truth from Jesus Christ." So the Father was pleased to send His only begotten Son, Jesus, to this world in human flesh, and the Word became flesh. In God's time, in the time of God, Jesus Christ became flesh. So that is a fact. That is the truth. That is the truth that the church of Colossae needs to understand. That needs to be reminded in their hearts again and again. And that is why Paul is trying to say, Jesus Christ was incarnated in the flesh. It's not that they didn't know because they are Christians. They were taught by Epaphras. They believed in the gospel. But again, Paul is trying to repeat this again and again so that one, like consider our case though, when something is repeated, we all know the word of God, but every Sunday, every meetings, we hear the word of God so that it reminds us that who we are and what God has done in our lives so that it results in the glory of God, giving praise to God, giving thanks to God. It's not that we don't know any of these facts. We know the Bible. We know how we were saved. We know about salvation. We know about the doctrines of faith. But when we, when we hear about the doctrines of faith again and again, it reminds us, it's an opportunity for us to be reminded of the truths of the Scripture. It is an opportunity to be reminded of the doctrines of what, the doctrines of faith so that we give thanks to the Lord continuously. We give praise to God continuously. That is the same reason why Paul is again repeating that Jesus Christ was incarnated. For the fullness of deity dwells in bodily form. Because in Colossians one, nineteen also, he told the same thing. "For it was the Father's good pleasure for all the fullness to dwell in Him." He already told that in first chapter and he's trying to repeat the same thing. "For in Christ the fullness of deity dwells in bodily form. Christ was incarnated in the flesh, and in Christ you have been made complete, and He is the head over all rule and authority." So what he's trying to say is there's no need to be circumcised. There's no need to follow the dietary laws. There's no need to follow the Old Testament ceremony laws. But in Christ, you are complete. Your identity is in Jesus Christ. And in Christ, you are complete. You don't need to go back to the Old Testament. You're in the new covenant. You are in the new, New Testament age where Christ was crucified. Christ was buried. Christ resurrected. He ascended to the throne of God, now interceding for each one of us. And now our duty is that to be reminded, to recognize who we are and continuously give praise to God, give thanks to God, have an overflowing heart filled with gratitude, have an overflowing attitude filled with gratitude. So that's why he says, "In Him you have been complete." He's trying to tell the church of Colossae, "In Christ, without Christ, you have no fullness. You have no perfection. You are no, you have no completion. But in Christ, you are complete. In union with Christ, you are complete." Or when we, when you accept Jesus Christ as your personal Savior, you are complete in Jesus Christ. You don't need any other laws to be complete, but rather when you accept Christ as your Savior, when you put your faith in Jesus Christ, you are complete. You are perfect in Christ because the righteousness of Christ was given to you or you now have the imputed righteousness, as we know from the Scripture. Romans talks about it very well. Christ gave, Christ gave His righteousness and He took our sins. So there was an exchange that happened. We've been hearing in the last couple of weeks what is righteousness. So I don't want to go there. Second Corinthians five, twenty-one talks about it. He became sin when he was not a sinner. He didn't engage in any sinful activities. He didn't engage himself in any sinful deeds. But for us, for the sake of us, because of His mercy, He became sinful for us so that we would become the righteousness of God. And because we are righteous, because we have a right standing with the Lord, we are complete in the Lord. And Paul says, "He is the head over all rule and authority." As we know, Jesus Christ is the head of the church. And Ephesians one, twenty-one, "For far above all rule and authority and power and dominion and every name that is named, not only in this age, but also in the one to come, He put all things in subjection under His feet, under whose feet? Under the feet of Christ, and gave Him as head over all things to the church, which is His body, the fullness of Him, who fills all in all." A very beautiful passage, Ephesians one, twenty-one to twenty-three. Jesus Christ reigns above every authority on heaven and the earth. Christ is the head of the church. Christ is the head of all rulers and authorities, not only in this age, but in the future age. So He is the head in the past, in the present, in the future. He is the head of all rulers and authorities in the past, present, and future. And He put all things, or God put all things in subjection under the feet of Christ and gave Christ as head of all things to the church. Christ is the head of the church and we are the body of church. We are the body of Jesus Christ. We all are part of the body of Christ. But remember, Christ is the head and Christ rules over everything. Christ rules over all of us. Christ is the sovereign ruler. He commands, He rules, He puts laws. And our responsibility is to adhere to the laws of Christ, adhere to the rules what Christ has given in the Scripture. And remember, church is the body of Christ, the fullness of Christ, who fills all in all. We are the temple of Christ too. God's presence is inside us. So be reminded of that fact that Christ is the ruler. He's the head over all rule and authority. So submit to Jesus Christ all the days of our life, all throughout our whole Christian journey. Our responsibility is to submit to Jesus Christ because He is the head over all rule and authority. First Corinthians fifteen, twenty-four, "Then comes the end, when He hands over the kingdom of God, kingdom to the God and Father, when He has abolished all rule and all authority and power." Talking about the future age, when He hands over the kingdom to God and Father, when He has abolished all rule, all authority, and power. Yes, He abolished Satan, the evil powers at the cross. But remember, we're still living in a sinful world because bodily or we have not been redeemed completely in our body. That happens when Christ comes again and when we, when we read Revelation, we know more about it, the millennial kingdom and everything is coming up. So there is a time that is coming that Satan will be chained forever. Now Satan has the power, he's the prince of the world right now. But there is a time coming in the future where he will be chained forever. Then sin won't reign anymore. No sorrows, no sickness, no sinful effects in the world. Till that time, he is the prince of the world. Sin will keep on, it is a sinful world. It is a sinful age and we can be influenced by sin. And that is why Paul gives all these exhortations that, "Remember your identity in Jesus Christ and He is the head over all rule and authority." So being empowered by the Spirit, it is possible. It can happen that you adhere to the lordship of Jesus Christ. Unless you put Jesus Christ as your Lord, you still will be influenced by this evil age, by the, by the evil things of the culture. So remember to put your allegiance to Jesus Christ. Ephesians three, ten, "The manifold wisdom of God might now be made known to the church through, to the rulers and authorities in heavenly places." So the wisdom of God is now known to the church. And what is the wisdom of God? The wisdom of God is Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ has been made known to the church now. The church has now access to Jesus Christ because Christ reconciled the church back to God the Father. We were dead in our sins and trespasses. We had a, there was a wall between us and God. There was a wall between people and God. But Christ abolished that law and Christ, the wisdom of God, appeared to each one of us and now we have access to God the Father. So let Christ fill us up. Let Christ fill our hearts. Let Jesus fill our minds and let us submit to the lordship of Jesus Christ. So Paul says, "In Him you have made, made complete and He is the head over all rule and authority." I hope you understood what that means now. Christ is the head of the church. Christ is the head of all rulers and authorities. And in Christ, we find completion. In Christ, we find perfection. In Jesus Christ, we are righteous, we are holy, and we find our perfection, perfection in Jesus Christ alone. Verse eleven, "And in Him you were also circumcised with a circumcision made without hands in the removal of the body of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ." So remember, in Old Testament, circumcision was a, was a thing that needed to be carried out by all male infants as part of being the, in the family of Abraham, as being part of the covenant family of Abraham. We know that, I don't want to go to Genesis again to read all those verses. Circumcision was a main thing in the old covenant. Circumcision was one of the most important things as part of adhering to the covenant of God. So you need, the male infants need to be circumcised to be part of the family of God. And that was a covenant given to Abraham. But remember, in New Testament, circumcision happens in the heart. It doesn't happen in the body, but rather circumcision happens in the heart by the Spirit. And that's what Romans says, right? Romans two, twenty-nine, "But he is a Jew who is one inwardly, and circumcision is that which is of the heart by the Spirit, not by the letter, not by the Old Testament standards, but circumcision is of the heart." Our heart, our heart needs to be circumcised. And how can our heart be circumcised? By the Holy Spirit, not by the letter. And His praise is not from men, but from God. When you're circumcised in your heart by the Holy Spirit, our praise doesn't come from men, but rather our praise comes from God. Galatians five, twenty-four, "Now those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified the flesh with its passions and desires." So when circumcision happens in our heart, we crucify our flesh with our passions and desires or the passions of the world and the desires of the world. So remember, we belong to Christ Jesus. Our identity, as I said before, is in Christ Jesus. And when we remember our identity is in Christ Jesus, the active response should be to crucify the fleshly desires and passions every day. Philippians three, three, "For we are the true circumcision. Everyone who is in Christ are the true circumcision, and they worship in the spirit of God and glory in Christ Jesus and put no confidence in the flesh." If we believe that we are circumcised in our heart by the Spirit, our response is to put no confidence in the flesh, but rather put our confidence and trust in Jesus Christ. And that's what Paul says in Philippians three, three. Remember, we are the true circumcision and we were saved by the blood of Christ who circumcised Himself at the cross. And that's what he says, Paul says, "In Him you are also circumcised with a circumcision made without hands in the removal of the body of flesh by the circumcision of Christ." Circumcision was made without hands. We didn't cut our outer skin, but rather we are circumcised in our heart, not with our hands, but by the Spirit. So remember that verse. The circumcision made without hands means we didn't cut our outer skin, but rather the Spirit circumcised our heart. And now in Christ, you are circumcised in the removal of the body of the flesh. What does that mean? It talks about the removal of sin. When Christ Himself gave His body at the cross, He removed sin from us, right? In a spiritual sense, I know, in a bodily sense, we are still influenced by sin. But we have been removed from the penalty of sin, right? We have been, we have been free, set free from the penalty of sin. Why? Because Christ Himself appeared at the cross of Calvary or presented His body at the cross of Calvary. And He remove, in the removal of the body of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ. Christ circumcised Himself, His full body, His complete body Christ circumcised himself, his full body, his complete body at the cross of Calvary. And through that circumcision of Christ, sin has been removed. Or in other words, the penalty of sin has been removed. We don't have to offer our body at the cross again. We don't have to go to cross again. We don't have to be circumcised as per the Old Testament law. But rather Christ, through his circumcision, has made us free from sin, from the penalty of sin. And we are being saved from the power of sin every day. And that is what is called progressive sanctification. And we will be completely be free from the presence of sin. That happens when Christ comes again. So three things are there. The penalty of sin, the power of sin and the presence of sin. Penalty of sin, Christ made us free when he presented his body at the cross of Calvary. Power of sin, we are being free from the power of sin every day through progressive sanctification. And from the presence of sin completely, when Christ comes again, we'll be set free. So remember those three. So through the circumcision of Christ, in the removal of the body of the flesh, we are circumcised now in our heart, not in our body. We are circumcised now in our heart. And how does that happen? Through the power of the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit circumcises our heart. And that's what Romans 2:29 says. "The circumcision is that which is of the heart by the Spirit, not by the letter or not by the Old Testament standards, but by the Holy Spirit, and the praise comes from God and not from men." And Philippians 3:3, "We are the true circumcision, who worship in the spirit of God and glory in Christ Jesus." And our response should be to put no confidence in our flesh because our flesh didn't save us. Our works didn't save us. It's only by grace alone, through faith alone, that we are, we are saved. So our response is to put confidence in the Lord. Verse 12, "Having been buried with him in baptism, in which you are also raised up with him through faith in the working of God, who raised him from the dead." He's talking about water baptism and we know what does water baptism imply? We are, we identify ourselves with the death, burial and resurrection of Jesus Christ. Now we are in Christ and now it is, we are, we are saved when we accept Jesus Christ as our personal Savior. And when we baptize in water, we are identifying ourselves and we are proclaiming to the world that we identify with the death and burial and resurrection of Jesus Christ. So that's why Paul says, "Having been buried with him in baptism." We bury ourselves and now we resurrect, when we come out of the water. I'm not going to a baptism class, but just to understand, just for you to understand, we have been buried with him in baptism. And we, when we go into the water, we bury ourselves. And when we come out, we identify ourselves as being alive in Jesus Christ. In which, and that's why Paul says, "In which you are also raised up with him." We are raised up with Christ when we baptize or when we, when we take water baptism, through faith. And how does that happen? Water baptism should happen only through faith, only when one believes, not when one is a child or an adult, but rather when he believes, when he proclaims, when he proclaims his faith in Jesus Christ, that's when water baptism should happen. And that's why Paul says, "In which you are raised up with him through faith." Only through faith, water baptism happens. Only when you believe that Christ is your Lord and Savior, in the working of God, who raised him from the dead. God raised Jesus from the dead, right? We read in Romans 8:11, the spirit of God that raised Jesus Christ from the dead. So having been buried with him in baptism, the church of Colossae have identified themselves with Christ Jesus through water baptism. And they have been raised up with Christ Jesus through that act in faith, in the working of God, who raised him from that. The same God who raised Jesus Christ, we read in Romans, who raised Jesus Christ from the dead, will resurrect us also when he comes back again. He has also, he has already resurrected us in spirit. He has already resurrected us when we accepted Christ Jesus. But in a bodily sense, in a perfect sense, he will redeem us completely, 100% when he comes back again. And verse 13, "When you were dead in your transgressions and the uncircumcision of your flesh, he made you alive together with him, having forgiven us all our transgressions." So we know that verse Ephesians 2:1 many times. I've also, I've told that, I have spoke about that verse. We were dead in our sins and trespasses. We were dead in our sins and transgressions. But in the mercy of God, we were made alive with Jesus Christ. And Christ raised, God raised us up with him and seated us with him in the heavenly places. By grace, you have been saved. So when we were dead in darkness, when we were dead in our sins, when we were dead in our transgressions, God of mercy, send his son, Jesus Christ. And Christ showed that mercy to each one of us. And in that mercy, we responded back to God through our faith. By grace alone, we have been saved. So remember, that was our condition. And Paul is telling the church of Colossae, "That was your situation too. That was your condition. You were dead in your transgressions and the uncircumcision of your flesh. Your flesh was uncircumcised. But when you accepted Christ Jesus, now your heart is circumcised." So now you try to connect with the verse we read before. You were uncircumcised in your flesh. He's talking to Gentiles too. Jews and Gentiles are his audience. But now you are circumcised in the heart. How? When Jesus Christ removed the penalty of sin at the cross of Calvary. You are uncircumcised in your flesh. Now you are circumcised in your heart. You don't need circumcision of the flesh. You just need circumcision of your heart. And how does that happen? The Spirit circumcises your heart. And when you realize that, remember overflowing gratitude should happen. Overflowing gratitude, overflowing attitude of gratitude should happen. Thanksgiving should happen when we remember, when we remember what all Christ has done for us. Give thanks to the Lord. So 13 verse, "When you were dead in your transgressions and uncircumcision of your flesh, he made you alive together with him, having forgiven us all our transgressions." Christ forgave everything. Christ forgave all our sins. So what should be our response? Ephesians 4:32, "Be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving each other, just as God in Christ also has forgiven you." Yes, Christ forgave our sins and it's a, it's a fact, it's a truth. But just, don't just stand idle or sit idle or walk idle just because Christ forgave you. But there is a response from your part. And what is that response? Just because Christ forgave you, you should be kind to one another. You should be tender-hearted. You should forgive each other. Three things mentioned in Ephesians 4:32. Be kind to one another, tender-hearted and forgiving each other. And that is what Christ expects from each one of us. Just because God in Christ forgave you, you should be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving each other, even if someone has done wrong to you, even if it's, if someone has hurt you, be forgiving to them. Be forgiving to one another. Be kind to one another. Be compassionate to one another. Because when we were enemies of Christ, when we were enemies of God, God didn't stay back from us, but rather God came near to us, right? God came near to us, showed his love when we were enemies and he made us his friends. Christ made us his friends. That's what Christ, Jesus talks about in John, chapter 13, right? He made us, "I've called you friends," right? So that is what Christ did. He didn't consider us enemies till eternity, but rather when we were enemies, he came to us, forgave our sins by giving his blood on the cross. So just considering that fact, reminding, I mean remembering that fact, be reminded of that fact that Christ forgave us when we were enemies. So because of that, our response is to be kind to other human beings. Be tender-hearted, forgiving each other, even if they have done wrong to you, even if they have done mistakes, even if they have committed sin to you, even if they have hurt you. Be forgiving to one another because Christ forgave you. That's what Paul says in verse 13. "When you were dead in your transgressions and uncircumcision of your flesh, he made you alive together with him, having forgiven all our transgressions." And verse 14, "Having canceled out the certificate of debt, consisting of decrees against us, which was hostile to us, he has taken it out of the way, having nailed to the cross." Christ has nailed all our sins to the cross. He has reconciled us back to God the Father. And just because we are reconciled, we are now children of God. We are now in union with Christ. We are now united to Christ because Christ has reconciled each of us back to God the Father. And that's what he says, Paul says, "Canceled out the certificate of debt." We had a debt. We owe a debt. We owed a debt to God, but he didn't allow us to repay and we couldn't repay also. Even with our works, even with any standards, human standards, we could not repay to God the debts that we owed. And because of that, he knew that, he sent his son, God the Father sent his son, Christ, to cancel out all the debts. Now Christ has canceled out the certificate of debt consisting of decrees against us. God had a decree against us, the judgment, punishment. He had a decree against us. He had judgment against us. And now he has removed that judgment. That judgment has gone out of the way. Why? Because Christ gave himself at the cross of Calvary and he has taken it out of the way, being nailed to the cross. Remember what we studied today. See that no one takes you to captive through philosophy and empty assumptions according to men, but rather always follow the principle of Jesus Christ. And remember, we, we studied, Paul says, "For in him, for in Christ the fullness of divinity or deity dwells in bodily form, and in Christ we are complete." No, nothing else makes us complete. Only Jesus makes us complete. And Christ is the head of all rule and authority. And remember, we are circumcised not in the flesh, we are circumcised in our heart. And who does that? This Holy Spirit does the circumcision in our heart. And that gather, that garners praise from God. And we have been buried with Christ in baptism through faith. And we are raised up with Christ in the working of God. And we were dead in our sins and transgressions, but now God has made us alive together in Jesus Christ. He showed his mercy. He showed his compassion. He showed his kindness at the cross of Calvary. So our response should be to give thanks always. Overflowing gratitude to God for what he has done in our life. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful time you've given us, Lord, to learn from your word, Lord. You deserve all the glory, honor and praise, Lord.